Good morning, everyone. I appreciate your patience while we sorted through some technical difficulties. This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting on April 28, 2020. It is 9:10 a.m. It's meeting number 202007. We are holding this meeting virtually in deference to the Governor's orders to stay at home, and we want to thank everyone who jumped on. Let's go ahead and Dane, if you could please... Well, let's start with the roll call, please. Dane, you're muted, I think.
President Barry?
Here.
Now, can you hear me now? I haven't touched a thing. Trustee Olanichuk?
Here.
Trustee Stalker?
Here.
Trustee Desmond?
Yeah.
Trustee Phelan? Trustee Boarder?
Here.
Trustee Mallow? We have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. I have a flag behind me. If we could rise for the pledge, if you desire.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Divisible, ever and ever.
Thank you very much. It's so strange to do this electronically. Public comments, I want the... I want to acknowledge public comments by Dr. Katie Narboni, President of the Chamber of Commerce, in regard to the Southwest Visitors and Convention Bureau membership. Everyone should have received a copy of those minutes or those... her statement. If anyone did not, please let me know right now. Hearing none. We're going to move on to conflict of interest disclosure. Does anyone have a conflict to disclose with any item on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to quick proclamation. It is Municipal Clerks Week, and this is May 3 through May 9, 2020. And I'm just going to sign that proclamation. And again, we are not reading all these, but they are being duly noted and recorded. I have another proclamation, item 6. This is Older Americans Month. May 2020 is Older Americans Month. This is requested by Plows and Plow Council on Aging, and I'm signing this proclamation as well, and it should be duly recorded. Item 7 is a request to approve a garden center at Dulles, Go at 9424 Southwest Avenue from mid-April 2020 through mid-June 2020. This is item 7. May I have a motion, please, on item 7?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Boarder made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Stalker is our second. Any discussion, gentlemen? Let's take that vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 8 today is approval of meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes 202006 dated April 14, 2020. May I have a motion, please, on item 8?
Motion approved, Mayor.
I'm going to give that to Trustee Stalker, seconded by Trustee Boarder. Any discussion? Let's call a vote, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olanichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond? Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We're going to go on to new business by Village Trustees. We're going to start in District 6. Trustee Phelan, how's everything going there, sir?
So far, so good. I don't want to jinx it.
Okay. Any report?
Yes, one thing, Mayor. I do want to address Dr. Narboni's comments, although you didn't read them into the... the audio here. For anybody who is watching or listens after the fact, this is related to yet another request to the village to support an organization that we no longer use, no longer provide service to us. We severed our relationship with them in 2019, very publicly at a meeting where it was vigorously debated and discussed. Members of the organization showed up, and the fundamental problem with this repeated ask of the village to sign on to a letter like this is, to me, commit fraud, because the purpose of this letter, to me, is clear, and to Trustee Mallow, who also looked at this last year. And I don't mean to suggest that the purpose is fraud, but if we were to sign it, I believe we would be committing fraud, because the letter itself suggests that those who sign it are representing that this group represents them formally. Not an informal thing. I believe many of our chamber members are being misled to think that it's no big deal, that it's a free thing, and why would we turn down something free? And I think the problem is, many of those people who are being misled don't know the facts. And the facts they'll briefly share with them go back almost two decades. And in some reform, the board knows this, but just for those listening, this organization ostensibly represented the Village of Oaklawn and others in the Southland in a marketing capacity. The name itself suggests convention and tourism. And from 2001 to 2019 or 18, I forget which we stopped looking at, I believe it was 18, the village sent them $1.2 million for this purpose, using a portion of a tax on our local hotels. And fundamentally, the premise would be that they were going to promote Oaklawn to the various... I don't know what. And that was always one of the problems, who they were promoting to, how they were delivering that message, and going back, again, to 2004 and '05, when I first began to look at these things closely. And by these things, I mean the various publications that they put out, a magazine each year, calendars, special events. All board members would receive these things in our mail, so we had evidence of those documents being prepared. My problem then, and that problem remained up until 2019, is for the money that the organization received from us, there was very little, if any, promotion of Oaklawn. And it got worse and worse as Tinley and Orland grew in economic power and had legitimately convention centers out there. We were dwarfed, culminating in, and this was very public, a woman from the organization at the meeting challenging my assertion that I provided that the majority of the money that municipalities provide to this organization go to the salaries and benefits of the people working there. And when I asked very specifically for evidence of the value, there were representatives from our local businesses who were, you know, vouching for the group. And of course, I understand why, because they feel they're getting free marketing and promotion. My contention was, it's marketing, so therefore, we should be able to point to tangible benefits of the marketing. And by that, I meant, can anybody show us actual validated documentation that shows the money that was being spent was resulting in business in Oaklawn? The easiest way, I thought, was legitimate hotel reservations at one of our hotels. There was a comment by one of our hotel managers that the group was responsible for, I think it was $400,000 worth of rooms at the particular hotel in a given year. And if you... And the board recall, my back of the envelope math at the time suggested, at an average room rate, that would mean about 100 rooms a weekend, every weekend of the year. And when asked for even one invoice, email, what have you, suggesting that, yes, this reservation, or this convention, or this group of people booked the rooms here specifically as a result of their communications with this bureau, none was offered. And all we were given were terms like impressions and touches and things that, from a marketing standpoint, are... They sound good, but there's no way to validate or audit that. And so, the issue, as it was 10 years ago, and again, two years ago or a year ago, was the value the village were receiving for this money. And I contend it, as Paul Mallow did, as he looked at things, that the value wasn't there. In response to this, this organization went on a very public attack against us, including at one of the very chamber meetings that our chamber representatives are coming to solicit our support for this, very publicly stood up and bashed the village board for our narrow-mindedness, and I forget the other things that were told. So, it's really hard, conceptually, when you look at, A, from the financial perspective, and B, from the relationship perspective, to constantly be inundated with emails and implied threats that the village board is going to be blamed for things that nobody, to this day, can show any material evidence of value. And I'll leave everybody with this. You may or may not have looked at the documents that Paul Mallow and I have over the years, but I contend this. We were told they print 170,000, or the number always changed, magazines that featured all these various events. And my contention then, as it is now, is nobody flies into Oaklawn or Chicago area looking for a magazine to page through village by village or by calendar, looking for things to do, not when smartphones are universally owned. But more importantly, when I asked where those documents or where those publications were sent, you would have thought we would hear to all of these various, I don't even know what the term would be, conventions, tourism groups, trade associations. But what we were told was, the majority of them were just dropped off at the airports or even at the offices or at the, I forget, maybe it was a... something on Interstate 80. And again, that confirmed even more in my mind that the money that is going to this organization is badly misspent, and that we had an obligation to our businesses and our residents to not continue down that path. And where we sit today is, being asked and almost threatened that if we don't sign on to this document, saying that we do still use this organization, who is going to go to the state to ask for money based upon their representation that they do still represent us? I can't sign on to that. That's not accurate, and that is fraud. So, I just want to make it clear to Dr. Narboni and the others who've solicited our support for this and have asked several times why we're not. I mean, I personally responded back to one of the people saying, "I'd be happy to explain to you the rationale if you missed the last meeting or the meetings were just discussed." But it doesn't appear that people are interested in those facts. They just seem to want to seize this idea that this is a free thing. Why would we turn down something free? And I'll finish with this. If it's free, how much value is there in this quote-unquote promotion? Why would somebody do something for free? And why, to those remaining communities, whoever they are, that are still paying for the service, why would we pollute the effectiveness of their marketing dollars by allowing us to be quote-unquote "getting it for free"? I just want to make it clear, this is not an effort by the village to not support our chamber. I've said before, I'll say it again. I believe we should do a better job collectively, our business community. The technology that exists today and the relative economic or cheapness of those messaging platforms, I think we could do a lot. And the mayor's been a big proponent of shop Oaklawn. I think even going so far as maybe create a website. That's the nature, I think, of where we should be going, perhaps even like Rosemont and others, communicating directly with the state to get this grant money to support our businesses, instead of giving it to this group that, in my strong opinion, growing stronger every day provides little value, and in fact, does not help Oaklawn, takes every opportunity to bash Oaklawn. So, I just wanted to weigh in on that issue, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything else, Trustee Phelan?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. District 5, Trustee Stalker.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words about COVID-9. The month of April has been a very difficult time for everybody who's had to suffer through the pump confinement. I think things are going to change rather rapidly. That doesn't mean that we're going to be out in public and celebrating together in May, but I think what you're going to see in the coming couple of weeks is a different attitude toward how we should deal with this pandemic, and please pay attention to the news media and the public speakers, the people from hospitals, and make sure that we follow along with the changes. This is a very difficult health situation. I think we are about to look at, but stay close to home and follow the laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Stalker. District 4, Trustee Boarder.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to save my comments for the item 12 on the agenda, but I do want to echo Bud's, Trustee Stalker's comments. We've paid a major price in this country with our economy as a result of this virus. We need to, as individuals, comply with the rules and suggestions that have been made. It's hard, I know. I know it's hard to sit at your home, but with the price we've paid, it would be a shame to see an increase in the number of cases. And the Village of Oaklawn has had a number of cases, and the hospital's been pretty much inundated with COVID, I mean coronavirus patients. So, let's just state a course. Let's do our duty as citizens. That's all I have on that issue, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Boarder. District 3, Trustee Mallow.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few items tonight, or this morning, actually. This was a morning meeting, right?
Yes, this is morning.
The... One of the items on the consent agenda, I just wanted to bring notice to. I met with Mr. and Mrs. Kazaa in regards to their request for a special use permit and parking variation at 9724 Southwest Highway. The concern here was in regards to the billboard that was on top of their building, which has seemed to have fallen into a state of disrepair, has become an eyesore to the neighborhood. I just want to let you know that we've met with them. They recognize this, and will work to rectify the situation with the billboard. Secondly, I'd like to let everyone know in regards to Peach Fresh Market in District 3. That will be going forward very, very soon, so I just wanted to let people be aware that that is coming to fruition, and Peach Fresh Market should be up and running, I would say probably within 10 months to a year. And the last thing I have, Mayor, is the Oaklawn Lake Reservation Project is look to... It's finishing up very soon. I'd like to thank Earthworks for the work that they did, pulling out over 4,000 cubic yards of silt and increasing the capacity of the lake to about over 40% more water. So, that's about all the things that I have tonight. Stay safe, everyone. Thank you. That's all I have.
Hey, Trustee Mallow, great news on Peach Fresh Market and all the other things you're working so tirelessly on. What a refresh to change in District 3. Great leadership, sir. Thank you. District 2, Trustee Olanichuk. Yes, Trustee Boarder, real quick.
I just wanted to comment. You know, that's the biggest, best changes I have seen in 28 years in District, in Paul's district. Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you, Trustee Boarder. District 2, Trustee Olanichuk.
I just wanted to give a recap of our Public Works meeting that happened last week. Right now, we're in the process of getting the bids and the bid opening for our street resurfacing program for 2020, and there's been some infrastructure work done in the various districts. I do want to go back to and commend Trustee Mallow for the Oaklawn Lake. I know that that has been something that the village, as I was on record over two years ago, saying we needed to take our Oaklawn Lake and make it into the jewel that it is. And when you go around it, it absolutely looks gorgeous now. And then, talking to the engineers, they're saying that with that 40% improvement of capacity for water, we will be able to stock that lake with live fish, and it should be the state. So, we're waiting here with the state of Illinois to do for us on that. So, in this time where you're spending a lot of time indoors, eventually, we're going to break to be able to go outdoors, and I would invite all renters to take a look at Oaklawn Lake. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Very, very nice update. District 1, Trustee Desmond.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, I drove by Oaklawn Lake the other day, and it looks fantastic. It's going to be, you know, in the spring, summer, hopefully, when the grass starts coming back, it's going to look beautiful. I just want to commend people. Overall, I think people have been very responsible with our crisis. And anywhere I go, I see people wearing their masks, people socially distancing. People are willing to make that little sacrifice so we can all get on with our lives. You know, this thing won't last forever, and I totally, when we are back in business and when we, as a village, can see some revenue being generated again, I would love to see us do something for our small businesses, you know, to follow up on what Trustee Phelan was saying about the Tourism Convention Board. You know, we can definitely do a lot of better job for our own people than some magazine can, whether it's, you know, curb appeal improvements, help with advertising. I think we need to get, put together a little group that can reach out to our businesses and see what to do to help them. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Desmond. Okay, we're going to move on to our Village Managers' Report. Chief Palmer.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. Just to catch everybody up, as you know, the village hall is still closed. However, we continue to work behind the scenes here, and I want to thank all of our staff, Brian Hannigan and Adam Matts. We've been daily going over budget issues and trying to ensure that the village moves forward. And even with the reduced revenue that we believe will be coming in in the summer months, we are trying to make the adjustments now. So, I want to thank staff for all that, and if anybody out there does need a permit or is looking to do village business, I do want everybody to know that we do have staff that are working behind the scenes, and if you call, we'll return your call, and we will try to take care of you as expeditiously as possible. That's all I have today, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief Palmer. We're going to move on then to item 11. This is the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Item 11 is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission refill, granting a special use permit and parking variation for residential use at 9724 Southwest Highway. This was a 6-0 vote to approve petition number 2020-5. Straram and Chanra Kazaa are the petitioners in District 3. And then, B is an ordinance granting that request. C is discussion of executive orders pertaining to the wearing of face masks coverings in the Village of Oaklawn. D is cancellation of the last Board of Trustees' meeting of the month, beginning May 2020 until further notice because of concerns regarding the coronavirus. May I have a motion, please, on item 11?
Make that motion to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Desmond made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Stalker is our second. Thank you. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Item C, please. This is Tom Phelan. Remove for discussion.
Very good. Thank you.
Item D for discussion. Trustee Olanichuk.
Thank you, Trustee Olanichuk, removing item D. Very good. Any other discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. Let's take the vote on item 11. Thank you.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olanichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yeah.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 11C is discussion of executive orders pertaining to the wearing of face coverings in the Village of Oaklawn. And Trustee Phelan, you asked that item to be removed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, obviously, I don't know that this should have been in the Consent Agenda because it's a discussion, but I think that's just the formality of our, you know, in these difficult times, you know, not doing things that we're used to doing. As Trustee Stalker and Boarder already alluded to, this crisis is not something that, you know, we've ever seen before and hopefully will never see again. It's complicated. There are so many different elements. The way it seems to change daily, if not hourly. And I just wanted, my feeling is this, and this is ironic going into the meeting, because I was going to say, we, the village board, don't have health officials advising us. We can take from various news sources, you know, what we believe are the important elements, but even those change, and in this environment of ever-increasing politics affecting our news, it's difficult to even rely on what we're calling news anymore for accurate information. So, what I, and I talked with the mayor about this at length last week and several other trustees, is I think it's difficult enough to operate in this environment as a resident, as a businessperson, without having different layers of regulations. And what I was going to propose going into this was, instead of having an Oaklawn-specific directive that may or may not compete with or conflict with the governors or the counties, that we try to do something uniform. And what I was going to say is, for ease of purpose, allowing the governor's rule as it is, and again, not suggesting I agree or disagree with any element of it, but just so that people traveling across borders aren't thinking, oh, now I'm leaving Evergreen Park and have to go into Oaklawn, and the rules may be different. Now, that was going to be my, you know, intention going in, and just yesterday, the governor's orders were challenged. And I think rightly in some degree, because as many are saying, and I think even Trustee Boarder alluded to, there's the very obvious health aspect and the fact that people who get this disease, if they have any sort of pre-existing condition, they are very, very susceptible to dying, and we don't want that to happen. The governor is being challenged by downstate representative who claims, you know, one size does not fit all, that, you know, his town is not the same as Cook County, Montana's not the same as New York City, and there's a lot of value in that. And I heard somebody say, if Montana had this breakout, would New York City close down? So, I'm not here to suggest I have the answer to that, but I do want to introduce into the mix maybe something more along the lines of, we follow the governor's or the county's guideline. And I briefly looked into this. I consulted with an attorney who said that, you know, the county at this point is very similar, if not the same, as the state, but that some local municipalities, and again, we are directly connected to the city of Chicago. We do have a major Level 1 hospital, so we may be a little more different than a Bulling Brook or an Orland Park, but there are very serious issues on the other side of this, if you will. And that being the impact it's having on people, their lives, their livelihoods, their businesses. We had two suicides in Oaklawn in one day, I think, last week. I've never seen that before. I don't profess to know if it was directly related, but we have to assume it's not in part, certainly related to the stress it's causing everybody. So, I just want to say, as this progresses, and hopefully, we all have a forward-looking, positive outlook. We continue. I would like to not do things I'm seeing in other places where they're looking six months out and canceling events like concerts, or I, you know, I laud Trustee Mallow for taking the initiative with Oaklawn Baseball to schedule their parade. I do think we're going to get past this, but I don't believe, and I'm not a health expert, don't want to sound like one, that the strategy should be, everybody stays at home to a large extent until a vaccine is found, because as we keep hearing, that could be 12 and 18 months away, and our economy and our very existence, you know, at that point, could be irreparably, you know, harmed. The village alone is looking at a $6 to $7 million budget deficit. The county is looking at $200 million. People don't have the money to pay us for the services we need to provide them. So, I do applaud the health industry and all of our local health experts and their desires for us to maintain the course, which I'm certainly not proposing we don't, but also think we, as a board, because a lot of power does rest in our hands, and by power, I mean responsibility, to look at the whole picture and to perhaps at some point in the near future, as the mayor did last week, And to perhaps at some point in the near future, as the Mayor did last week, say, we might have to do something a little differently than the state or the county. So I just wanted to weigh in with that sentiment. I'm not proposing anything drastic, but just wanted to weigh in with that sentiment.
Thank you very much, Trustee Phelan. Any other discussion on Item C?
I've got a comment. As I said in my opening remarks, I think you're going to see a lot of things changing in May. Pay attention to what's going on. Follow the rules that are put forward as time goes on. I think we're going to have some sense of reason as time goes on. And I think it's going to be very important. It'll probably move much more quickly toward freedom of movement and things like that. But pay attention to the healthcare officials that are making the rules for the county or this state or even the city of Chicago. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Stalker. Trustee Vorder?
Yeah, Mayor. First off, I want to congratulate you for taking the lead on this and setting these standards before even the governor or the county did. I know that you've been beat up quite a bit on social media, okay, for this edict that you came out with. But I wanted to tell you that, as I talk with my constituents, many of them are in strong support of this decision to wear face masks. So again, thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion, gentlemen? I just want to add a couple of things. You know, Trustee Vorder, you're correct. I did get a lot of, and still continue to get a lot of comments on how this is government overreach. I've been compared to Nazis. I've been called a tyrant. I've been called a lot of things, frankly, over the last week or so. And, you know, I just want to say, I've also been thanked a lot. We have people who are terrified to go to work. Our grocery store workers are working in a situation where they're not, before this, being provided equipment to stay safe. This ordinance requires their employers to step up and make sure it's not only safe for the community who goes to these stores and shops there, but it's safe for the workers too. And workers have thanked me, and we cannot forget that they're on the front line. They are not paid anywhere near what our doctors and firefighters and police men are paid. And they still go. They know their job is important and they're doing it well. And I applaud them. I want to thank them. With respect to people who say this is just a fluke, this is not serious. This week, we're going to approach a very grim milestone. More people will have died of this virus in two months than in the entire Vietnam War in approximately 20 years. We have already exceeded the number of deaths with this in two months than we did the bloodiest battle at Gettysburg in our nation's history. This is changing lives. Everyone has paid a toll. Everyone, you know, has suffered. Our businesses, it's agonizing. People are trying all things to try to keep revenue going. They're trying to work. It's heartbreaking to see the impact this has on every family and every business, literally, in our community. I want to thank everyone for doing what they can. The mask is not designed to protect the wearer. It's designed to keep the little spray that comes out as you talk or laugh from going on surfaces that other people are touching. Even though we've been really good with the stay-at-home order, we have still seen the cases continue. So there is spread in the community. We think that this will reduce it. It is worth a try. It doesn't have to be a fancy covering, a scarf, a bandana, a piece of cloth, your T-shirt pulled up like that. We don't really care. It just is a courtesy to those workers on the front line, a courtesy to your neighbors, a courtesy to those with pre-existing conditions who have to go out and get what they need to live. It's just a small thing we can be doing for each other. I read an article on another mayor who did the mask order, and he said, "Don't view the mask as something scary. View each mask as a smile to your neighbor, as a gesture of I care about you." And that's the spirit that this was done in. I don't like it either. I don't like how this has changed our lives. It just has. It's, there's a wonderful Abraham Lincoln quote. And the stormy past doesn't, and I'm paraphrasing, the compass doesn't justify the stormy present. We can't do what we did in the past to justify what we did today. We have to rise to this occasion, innovate, and this is what Americans do, and this is what neighbors do. And, you know, just, I appreciate everyone who has taken the time to thank me for this. I also appreciate those who have taken the time to criticize me. I do care very much whatever a resident thinks, and I've tried to respond to every question. So with that, any other discussion? There is no vote needed on Item C. I'm going to go on to Item D. And Item D is Cancellation of the Last Board of Trustees Meeting of the Month. This is the fourth Tuesday, beginning in May 2020, until further notice because of concerns related to the coronavirus. Trustee Olenichek, you requested this to be removed?
Yeah, I just want to bring this up for discussion. There's a lot of business that's going to be going before us. And I am concerned that, without even getting into the month of May, we're already looking to cancel a meeting, which we've been able to approve, to have the meetings both in the Village Hall for some of them and other meetings for our board meetings via the video. So I just think it's way too premature, especially knowing that Public Works is going to have bid openings. And we're going to need to be able to get together as a board to vote on the movement of some of these projects forward. So I would just ask that we don't prematurely take this meeting out at this point. We take it at the next meeting. We can always come back and look at our first meeting of May to say if we need a second meeting or if we don't need a second meeting.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is Trustee.
Okay, one person, like, I can't tell who that is. Go ahead.
Sorry, this is Trustee. I think, I agree with Trustee Olenichek here. I think canceling meetings when certain business needs to be done and being able to take a few hours out of our day, whether it be video conference or actually getting over to Village Hall, I don't think at this time needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, this is Trustee Phelan, and I see both sides of the argument here. I have no aversion to these virtual meetings despite the technological difficulties. I also agree that in terms of bid openings and such where there's a lot of documentation and now the limitations we have in our executive suite, we have eliminated some positions. We're doing some transitioning to make the clerk, Jane Quinlan, unburden her with a lot of things that fell in that area, including creating the agenda, which does take some time. I did want to point out that Dan Olmosinski from the Research Department and Tom Swoff from IT have agreed to help in that position. It was tremendous. And, you know, the Mayor suggested that perhaps we do this. I think we face that, that to the extent we can address the spending issues, which we are trying to do by virtue of reducing staff, nobody likes to do that. But when we're basically shut down, and now the governor has extended that stay-at-home order, you know, we have to do what we can as trustees and stewards of the taxpayers' money. So I think it's important, Mayor, that it get out there what the reasoning behind this was. But I don't have any aversion to the thought that Trustee Olenichek suggested that at the next meeting, because in two weeks' time, the world can change, that, you know, we can cancel the meeting at that point. And I did hear from Dan Olmosinski and Tom Swoff, I met with them last week, about transitioning the agenda over to the Village Manager's office and away from the clerk's office where it fell. And they said that, you know, it'd be ideal to have only one meeting a month. It's less effort. But that they could do it if not. So I think it's not as big a deal as I thought it was before, or mayor, as you might have. But again, one more thing, since our last meeting and since the Finance Committee meeting, the governor's extended the stay-at-home order for another month. And I've not talked to the Village Manager specifically about that. But again, it introduces another layer or level of, you know, cuts, I believe. We have to look at, whereas before, perhaps everybody who didn't get laid off or jobs eliminated will need to work limited hours and get paid for limited hours, at least for, you know, the month of May or the foreseeable future. Just as Tim Desmond said, we want, as board members, consider giving up our own pay for that same time period, which I do agree with, and I think it's a good message. So I know it's a little more off-topic than canceling the Board of Trustees' meeting, but it's all tied together, and I just want to layer in that information.
Thank you. That's pretty much the rationale. We have seen, unfortunately, some cuts in our staff. Chief, I applaud you for making the tough decisions. We need to do as an organization to maintain services for residents and continue to do so. And I think we're down four or five people, Chief, now. Is that correct?
I think we're closer to six, Mayor.
Yeah.
We made a couple cuts.
Yeah, it's very challenging, and we're doing our best. And it was the spirit of putting this on the agenda just in this time. At that point, we weren't seeing a lot of new business requests, a lot of petitions coming through. But I'm neutral either way. I think we can move this again to the following agenda if needed. If anyone would like a motion to postpone this item, I'm good with that. If, whatever the board wants. I just want to not overburden staff and, you know, while still getting village business done. Nothing in this or two special meetings if needed. So whatever people want to do.
I think a motion to remove this.
Okay, who is making that motion, please?
Trustee Olenichek.
Trustee Olenichek, I need you to either postpone or a motion to deny or something like that.
Motion to postpone.
Thank you. We have a motion to postpone from Trustee Olenichek. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Trustee. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, Mayor. Will we be adding this to our next Village Board agenda for discussion at that time?
Yes.
Okay, because this is not an issue for us elected officials to sit here. This is really about the staff, and they put a lot of time and effort to every Village Board meeting. So I think there's some legitimate argument made here on both sides. So I'll support it, but I'd like to be able to readdress it.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Let's call the vote at 11D.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes, to the motion to postpone.
Correct. Trustee Olenichek?
Yes, to the motion to postpone.
Yes, it is. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yeah.
Trustee Vorder?
Yeah.
Trustee Mallow?
Yeah.
Motion passes 6-0 to postpone the next.
Thank you very much. Item 12 is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission Referral, granting a special use permit for medical office at 4031 West 95th Street. This was a 3-0-1 to approve Petition Number 201918, HSG-KRE is the petitioner in District 4. And then 13 is an ordinance granting that request. We have a motion on 12?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Vorder made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Stalker is our second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Seven years ago, when I decided to run for an elected position, I had four or five goals. And the number one goal was the redevelopment of 95th and Pulaski. And today, we take a vote on one of the final decisions on that development, which in my personal opinion is beautiful, spasmodically and constructurally, okay? But we all, we all looked for a retail development there. And of course, the market has changed, and things just didn't work out as we all wanted. But this Board of Trustees stood behind our goal of accomplishing a development which would bring financial resources to the village budget. And I think we've accomplished that. I have a prepared statement, Mayor, that if you will allow me, I want to read into the agenda.
Certainly.
Thank you. Just like major, the major development at Advocate, the expansion there in 111th and Cicero, coming to terms with the right mix of use and incentives that this project has been a long and difficult road, but a worthwhile one. This agreement may be the final piece, the planning puzzle at 95th and Pulaski. But this project began years ago when this board and our mayor put their foot down to rid this community of an increasingly problematic Chuck E. Cheese with our commitment to ending the issues going there. And if not this board standing behind each other, we would have not accomplished that, and it reached this point today. Couple that with Kmart closing, and all of a sudden, we were struck with the prospect of a vacant gateway corner to our village in the 4th District. We all wanted a full retail center, as I said. But make no mistakes about that, and we'll continue to demand that our retail corridor be filled with actual retail business as sales tax is the lifeblood of this community. But given the circumstances, this agreement preserves the village's retail expectations while allowing for a unique mix of use that we hope will bring people from the neighboring communities to Oaklawn for years to come. I greatly await the announcement of the final tenants in this center, and I commend this board for planning the development of this important corridor in the 4th District. And I might point out, no additional housing or the need for a shift. This project and this agreement that we will be voting on has a pilot.
Gary, we lost your audio, please.
Oh, can you hear me now?
I do.
Okay. Anyway, this issue that we'll be voting on tonight will provide a substantial portion of revenue to our general fund as DuPage County Medical Center and the developer has agreed to pay a pilot payment over the next 20 years indexed at 2% for inflation every year. As Trustee Phelan had projected, will provide over $8 million to the Village of Oaklawn. Again, I want to thank our attorneys, particularly who negotiated this agreement. They worked tirelessly to get this done, particularly Pat Connolly. And I would like to see the board support this with a motion to approve.
Thank you, Trustee Vorder. Any other discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, this is Trustee Phelan.
Certainly, Trustee Phelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to layer on what the Trustee Vorder said. He described the situation perfectly, laid out the history, and did in fact specifically reference the medical building in there. I think that's important, that people understand. You know, oftentimes, looking at our agendas, it's not often clear. But the original plan for this corner was a full retail and restaurant development. We, the board, were provided renderings that showed that. We shared those with the community. The community understandably was excited for the reasons Trustee Vorder stated. We were basically ridding the village of some very problematic properties, but more importantly, bringing in, you know, new businesses. And to this day, I still get multiple inquiries, I'm sure Trustee Vorder gets more of them, about what's going in there and when it's coming and how excited everybody is about that. But then things did take a turn last year, you know, for many reasons, both economical and based on the retail environment, things got more challenging. And the development then went from, you know, what we had hosted and projected to be a full retail and residential to a request from a large medical group to anchor the center of the existing big structure. As Trustee Vorder said, it's not an optimal solution. The one thing that Oaklawn doesn't need any more of from a business perspective is medical offices. is medical offices. The old joke was, you know, Oaklawn, you go to buy mattresses and bridal gowns and medical, seeking medical treatment. It's no longer a joke because, again, as Trustee Boarder says, that we rely upon those dollars to provide services to our residents and business community. And it gets ever more difficult to do so when many of the businesses that open up in our corridors don't pay or pay very little in terms of property taxes based on their business classification. So as Trustee Boarder said, this was a compromise situation. And, you know, it's not optimal, but we are going to get a good payment from the developer, and we have to thank them for their, you know, generosity. They were provided a generous incentive to use, and they, in turn, effectively are returning much of that incentive over a 20-year period. So it's important that people understand that we were steadfast in our desire to work on behalf of the residents and the business owners to eliminate problem properties and to not give up a major corridor that provided, you know, what used to be a half million or more in access to us and turn it into a center that's no longer retail or restaurant. So again, it's a good outcome, not a great outcome, given the tough environment we're in. And as Trustee Boarder said, our attorneys worked long and hard, as did the attorneys for HSG, the developers and the developers themselves. So I just wanted to make sure that there was a very clear picture on what it is the village is to look like.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a quick one.
I'm going to give it to Trustee Desmond and then Trustee Olenychuk.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick word. Even though we didn't get everything we wanted, it was a great compromise. And hopefully, that the compromise worked out by Pat Connolly and PGM can be used as a template moving forward for any other medical that is planning or would like to come to Oaklawn, that even though they won't be paying sales tax, they do have to contribute towards the revenue. And this pilot payment will be standard operating procedure for any medical business coming to Oaklawn in the future. That's all I have to say. And again, thanks to PGM for the great work they did, and to Trustee Boarder and Trustee Fallon for guiding us.
Thank you. Well said, Tim. Trustee Olenychuk?
Yeah, I just wanted to pile on to that. Trustee Boarder, I know that Chuck E. Cheese was a blemish, and in that area was a blemish. And seeing the money that's being put into it, and again, it didn't meet up to the retail that we wanted, but with the work that our legal had done, Trustee Fallon had done, and Trustee Boarder, we're going to get something that looks 1,000% better. And with the pilot payment, which Trustee Desmond has mentioned, will bring revenues back. And that's the most interesting thing. The village didn't put money out on this, but had the Trustee Fallon and Trustee Boarder and our legal not worked hard, we could have been out almost $8.3 million. So I like to see the concerted effort that all people worked to get a good solution. So again, thank you for saving the taxpayers $8.3 million and working very hard to upgrade a part of Oaklawn that needed it.
Thank you. Any other discussion, gentlemen? I guess I just want to add a few thank yous also. You know, this was very, very challenging. I want to thank Trustee Boarder, Trustee Fallon, and their legal team as well. It's been a long haul. But I also want to thank the Hubbard Street Group for working with us. It's very, very much appreciated the investment in this town. And we do look at sales tax revenue, and we also look at the energy in the gateway of our community. And I think the jobs this will add are good quality jobs, and all those people hopefully will be shopping and dining right there. And, you know, hopefully, it will create this energy that we all, our vision for Oaklawn should have. And I just want to thank everyone. It's been a lot. And hearing no further discussion, we're going to call the vote then on item 12.
One more comment, please.
Yes.
Yes, I would like to echo the thank you to the Hubbard Street. They built a beautiful shopping center there. They worked very hard with me, right to the point where I wanted a tree placed. Okay, so they were on top of every issue that was to the 4th District. So thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it sure looks beautiful there, Terry. Really, really beautiful. Any other discussion before we call the vote on item 12? Okay, let's call the vote on item 12, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Fallon?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're going to call the vote on item 13, which is an ordinance related to item 12, which we just voted on. May I have a motion, please, on 13?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Boarder made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Stalker is our second. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Let's call the vote, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Fallon?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Item 14 is Resolution 2009, excuse me, 2007-19, Resolution authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Property Tax Classification Agreement between the village of Oaklawn and HSG-KRE, Oaklawn Property Owner LLC, at 4031 West 95th Street in Oaklawn. They have a motion on 14, please.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Trustee Boarder made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to give that to Trustee Stalker, because I couldn't quite tell who the other voice was, but you guys were both at the same time. Any discussion on 14, please? Okay, hearing none. We'll call the vote, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Fallon?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item 15, Village Clerks Report.
All right. Approval of semi-monthly disbursements, number 2020-08D, dated April 28, 2020, in the amount of $1,815,625.14.
Thank you. May I have a motion on 15A, please?
I'd make that motion to approve.
Trustee Desmond made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That was Trustee Mallow. Thank you. Any discussion, gentlemen? Let's call a vote, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Fallon?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Under Village President's Report, I found the quote I wanted to read from Abraham Lincoln. "The dogmas of the quiet past are inadequate to the stormy present. Occasion is piled high with difficulty, and we must rise with the occasion. As our case is new, we must think anew and act anew." And it is a new world out there, but we will get through it together, Oaklawn. And I want to thank this board for being so accommodating of all the changes. And I especially, again, want to give a shout out to Chief Palmer. I really do feel fate has given us the right leader at the right time with this. He has a clear head, and he's very resolute. And, you know, I very, very, very much appreciate that skill set. And with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Make some motion.
I'm sorry, Trustee Desmond, what did you say?
Said I'd make that motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Trustee Desmond made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That was Trustee Stalker. Any discussion? Let's call a vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes to adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone. And we got through the technology. Good job. Appreciate it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.